Good evening and welcome to the October 18 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll for us?
Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Soul. Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Vreeman.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have accord.
Great, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Hookstra, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
This evening I'd like to offer a prayer by Friar Richard Rohr. Pray with me. Loving God, you fill all things with a fullness and hope that we can never fully comprehend. Thank you for leading us into a time where more of reality is being unveiled for us all to see. We pray that you will take away our natural temptation for cynicism, denial, fear, and despair. Help us to have the courage to awaken to greater truth, greater humility, and greater care for one another. May we place our hope in what matters and what lasts, trusting in your eternal presence and love. Listen to our hearts' longings for the healing of our suffering world. Knowing, good God, you are hearing us better than we are speaking, we offer these prayers in all the holy names of God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Next items are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine. They have been reviewed by council as part of our packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us, please?
4A, absence excused. 4B, approval of minutes, October 4th, regular meeting, October 11th, 2023 study session. 4C, Os of Office. 4D, Holland Board of Public Works Declaration of Surplus Material. 4E, Holland Board of Public Works Customer Portal Consulting Services Budget Amendment. 4F, City Clerk Claim Filed Against the City. 4G, Finance, July Financial Reports. 4H, Finance, Approved Purchase of Three Pickup Trucks. 4I, Finance, Accept Justice Assistance Grant Funding. 4J, Public Safety Services, 2023 Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Acceptance. 4K, Public Safety Services, Approval for Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning Traffic Enforcement Grant.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda?
Yes, I would like to have "I" removed, please.
All right, "I" that will then be placed at item 12E 4.4. Is there anyone else that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of letter "I."
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item is public comment. In all of our meetings, we provide the public the opportunity to be able to address council and frankly, all of our boards, committees, and commissions. We do have some rules that we follow here. One, you are only allowed to speak one time during the public comment period. We limit that time to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me to assist you. There is a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We also want to let you know that this is one-way communication. This is the opportunity for you to speak to council about anything that you would like to speak about, but we don't answer questions during this time, nor do we engage in any discussion. But if questions are proposed, perhaps staff can circle back around to be able to get you answers to those. We ask that you approach the podium, and please state your name and the municipality in which you live. Having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hunrickson Zeeland. I want to thank Councilmen Byrd and Vreeman for congratulating the students last week, really encouraging them for what they do. I believe this was instituted by Councilwoman DeBoer in her day on council, and I'm thankful that it's carried through each time. Also want to thank Councilman Corbin, he's not here, and Councilwoman Soul for standing up for our right to speech to come to the podium and say what's on our minds. The reason I keep on speaking about the anti-discrimination ordinance is because it does not represent Holland and its citizens' free expression of faith. Some say this council does not listen and consider what the public is saying. I echo that. I've spoken for four years, and the very thought of looking at the ordinance is out of the question. Mayor Box suggested that the city lawyer speak candidly about our religious freedoms are protected in this ordinance. I would say, yes, they are, by the words, but not by the actions, as our children are being indoctrinated with questioning their gender and drag queens, and people are escorted off their jobs threatening them with termination. I believe the ordinance needs to be revisited and considered as what its outcome has been up to this point. During the passing of the ordinance in 2020, twice a comment was spoken. Laws do not change hearts and attitudes. However, laws protect us and encourage us to do what is right, respectful, and decent, so all can live peaceful lives. This comes from the Bible. That is God's purpose for government. The heart, on the other hand, is only what God can do. So why would we want to influence the citizens to eliminate Him from our government in Holland? And thank you for your prayer tonight. I believe the council does consider God, but it's the action. The separation of church and state is prevalent in this city and in this government. Listen to what I heard today about the change of heart in Romans 8:27. And this is from the Passion Bible. "God, the searcher of the hearts, knows fully our longings; yet He also understands the desire of the Spirit of God, because the Holy Spirit passionately pleads before God for us in perfect harmony with God's plan and our desires. So we are convinced that every detail of our lives is continually woven together for good, for we are His lovers who have been called to fulfill His design purpose; for He knew us before we were born and destined us before the beginning to share the image of God." This is the explanation for this. Each of you hear it for yourself and for others. God, the heart searcher, searches our hearts, not just to uncover what is wrong, but to fulfill the true desire of our hearts, to be His fully. Grace triumphs over judgment. My thoughts here are, this is what we want of Holland. And this is important that we proceed in this way, including in the ordinance, that we make sure that this ordinance has not brought in, developed into these things in our culture here in Holland, because the very bedrock of Holland is our faith in God. Does everybody believe? No. Do they need to? I would say yes, but that's up to them. But we must have a government that supports the goodness in each person. And when we have such strife, like we do have it here, whether you want to talk about it or not, it is here, and it's hatred. It is downright hatred. Hate has no home here unless you disagree with me. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Orlando Estrada, and I lived in Ward II. And I've always lived there. I've lived in Ward II all my life. And my pronouns are His Majesty. So, I'd like to address councils on a few things, and thank God's place is not partisan, because this whole election year's been crazy. There are some things that I've talked to residents at the door I think everyone should be aware of, is they're asking me about who is responsible for the clay pipes beneath the residence. So I'm going to give you an example. If a pipe explodes before the sidewalk during the winter, does that go to the resident or does that go to the city for responsibility? If it's beside, like beyond the sidewalk, does that mean that the resident still pays for that or does that mean that the city takes care of that? I've actually spoke to people at the door that were telling me that they are one emergency away from bankruptcy, and because we all, you know, agree that Holland is an awesome place to live and that we also know that finances is a thing, I have people that were concerned about that, and I want to address that to everybody, no matter the outcome of the election, because finances do matter. I don't like to see people go out there and be homeless. There's a lot of homeless people out there as we speak, and we can't solve everybody's problems, but we can at least work towards solutions to make sure that's actually a thing. So, the reason why I'm here is apparently the Holland Senate won't send my press release, so a formal introduction, I am the writing candidate for Ward II, and I'm glad that so far it's been positive, because there's other people I know that make things negative, and I'm not a negative guy, I'm an upbeat guy. But I just want to make aware that there's many people asking me what's going on with the clay pipes, because roots grow into them, and eventually they will burst, and I just think it's a good note that everybody here should know, no matter what your stance is, that that should definitely be addressed, because again, I know a lot of people who are on a very fixed income, limited income, and I just want to make sure that's definitely known by everybody here in the city, so it can be, you know, find a resolution to that type of thing. So, earned that, tomorrow I'm going to make a short sweep, want to say hi to everybody. I ran for the seat back in 2007 against one of those open seats where Victor Roscoe sat there, ran against J. Peters, and he totally kicked my butt, but he didn't get 9%, he only got 2/3. So just put it out there, he wasn't that strong a mechanic he thought he was, anyway. But outside of that, I just want to make things, everything be upbeat. You know, a lot of people always want to complain to everybody, thinking that everybody has all the answers, because I ran for office, and you find out who your real friends are, you find out how people really interact, and I don't want to be a native energy, I want to be a positive energy. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for what you're doing. I want to thank everybody in council for what you've been doing so far, because I don't think sometimes you guys get enough thanks, because I just want to come against everybody, but I just believe that people should not have the issue of potentially losing their home because they can't pay their tax bill on their house because of an unfortunate incident that was never taken care of. So that's why I'm here, not here to make a ruckus, not here to say that somebody here's bad. That's been the most popular thing that has been addressed to me at the door. And it'd be really cool for the Wofford Project, have a performing arts center. I'm a performing arts guy, I like theater, I like video production, stuff of that nature. Something to think about, I know you guys can't directly answer that question right here, but I just want to make sure that it was fully addressed to council. So with that being said, God bless you guys and nobody else.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Brian Everett, and I live in the second ward on 12th Street. I am here today to find out, let's start with a little history on where we are. Thirty years ago, this city voted, along with Park Township and Holland Township, on a performing arts center. I find it interesting that Eric mentioned that. And that vote passed in the city. Holland Township voted it down. In those thirty years since, the performing arts get less and less support from the city, to the point where we don't get any support now. And that's very frustrating to myself and many of the performing artists who live and work in this area. And considering the fact that our big festival in May is a performing arts festival, where you rely on our dedication and our passion for the arts to make that festival work, it's disconcerting when we put our money into an investment for a project on the waterfront that gets thrown out because part of the project was not fully funded. And that part of the project that wasn't fully funded was the Performing Arts Center. I know about this because I led the charge for the performing arts. I got the community theater, the Holland Orchestra, and Turning Point Dance together. We worked with several of the other artists in the community to get this project to get together and brought it to the city as a proposal. The proposal included $400 million worth of development on that site on the private sector, fully funded. We could not get the performing arts fully funded, and because of the way the council put the requests for projects together, if it wasn't fully funded, we weren't going to consider it. I think the fact that we brought $400 million to the table at least deserves a vote by the city as to whether or not they want to invest in that kind of a future. Because we've been waiting thirty years for Performing Arts Center. If you think it's easy as a performing artist in this town finding a venue, you're wrong. Our people struggle daily to find a perform. We happen to have one at the community theater, it seats 100. And we struggle to get shows on, but we are doing our best to offer diversity and inclusion in everything we do. But as a small group with that limited space, we're not able to do a heck of a lot. When we heard that these people were willing to bring $400 million to the table to build the private, and their only request was that we find a way to have the city of Holland consider a perform, helping to fund a performing arts center, we thought that was a win. But the city says considering it isn't enough. You've got, if you don't have the money, we're not even going to consider it. And my people were told, we won't accept your proposal, because it's not fully funded. I think that does a disservice to every performing artist in this town. This town needs the arts. The arts make this town what it is, it makes the festival what it is. And I have friends all over town, when I tell them about this proposal, they say, why have we not heard about it? The only thing we hear about is condos. We brought the proposal in good faith. We don't feel that faith has been returned by the way this project was dealt with. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item seven. Special Order of the Day, Public Hearings, Transportation Services, Final Adoption of the Sixth Street Snowmelt Improvement Special Assessment Roll. Chief, I'm going to pass this off to you. Oh, Chief, we missed all of that because your microphone wasn't on, but, and just to let you, Chief Masser, welcome, thank you for holding down that seat tonight while Mr. Van Beek and Mr. Van Dyken are away. We've got a deep bench, we appreciate it that you're here.
I did sit in this seat for a little while, but it's been about five and a half years ago, so. But I'm used to not talking to anybody. Could everybody hear me out there without the mic?
Yeah, but they can't hear you at home, though.
Just say yes, just say yes, just say yes, so. I apologize, so just turn it over to Brian White and take over from here, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Chief.
Great, thanks, Matt. Good evening, Mayor Box, good evening, councilmembers, good evening, members of the public and folks tuning in from home. The item before you tonight involves finalization of special assessment for snowmelt improvements related to our Sixth Street construction project. I do want to just clarify, there's a couple of assessments further down on the agenda tonight. This one is for construction costs related to the snowmelt improvements on Sixth Street. The others before you tonight will be related to O&M, so just trying to draw a distinction there between the two. So, the items here, and you can see on the map there that's presented, basically all those areas that are shaded in along Sixth Street and then along pieces of College Avenue and Columbia Avenue are in the process of receiving snowmelt upgrades as part of our Sixth Street project this year. We're in the final throes of that project, and we do expect all those areas to be up and functional this winter for the upcoming snowmelt season. The assessment roll, again, basically involves assessing adjacent property owners for a portion of the snowmelt distribution improvements. And this is something that we've done with all of our snowmelt projects in the past, so we're, it's important, and I think we're very cognizant of carrying that forward, that policy of how we handle snowmelt improvement. So with that, I would just recommend or request that we go ahead and hold the public hearing and then adopt the resolution to finalize the assessment rule, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the staff? Great, wonderful, thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. And we do, as Brian said, we do need to do a public hearing on this, so I'll now open a public hearing. If any member of the public would like to address council in regard to this particular item, please step forward, and the same rules apply, we've got five minutes, you have five minutes. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7A?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item number eight, A, B, and C, these items were placed on the table. I would entertain a motion to take these items off the table.
Your Honor, I move we remove items eight, A, B, and C from the table to be considered individually.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst, any discussion? Roll call on this one, Ron, or a voice vote, can we do?
No, a voice vote is good to take off the table.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the items are now off the table. Chief, I'm going to pass this off to you.
Yeah, I'm going to use my microphone this time, how about that? So I'm a quick learner. I think I'll turn this over to Amy, who was going to talk about that, or is it Kara?
Amy.
Amy, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is the third time you're hearing about the O&M assessments. So, the parking assessment is at a base rate of 37 cents per square foot, and every year increases by 3%. So this year, the 3% increase will generate another $11,538, and it will apply to 158 properties that are within 400 feet of a public parking lot.
Okay. Great, any questions for staff?
One question.
Yeah, Dave.
The 3% increase, is that connected to like a cost of living type of?
It is a cost of living and also considering repairs that need to be done. You know, cost of increase of snow plowing is particularly one, but we always put it in front of the DDA board before we do the increase. It's not a guarantee that will increase by 3%.
Yeah, okay, so it's rooted basically in real-world.
Right.
Stuff, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, do you want me to stay up here for snowmelt?
Um, let's, yeah, why don't you stay up, but we'll, we're going to do, we'll do a public hearing on this one really quickly, and then, well, maybe quickly, we'll see. And then do the vote, and then we'll move on to item B. Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. I'm now going to open a public hearing in regard specifically to downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 8A?
Moved to approve downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment.
Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 8B, Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment. I'm guessing, Amy, you want to just come right back up on this one, rather than passing it off to Chief to pass it to you? There we go, all right.
The snowmelt, just coincidentally also is a 3% increase, just to keep up with cost of living on there. This year, we added 89,000 square feet of snowmelt on the Sixth Street project, so we are having 362 properties paying in at a rate of 52.5 cents per square foot.
All right. Any questions for staff? Great, thank you very much. We do need to do a public hearing on this one as well. Any member of the public that would like to address council in regard to this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 8B?
Moved to approve the snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 8C, Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment. Chief.
This time I think it's Kara Stern, correct?
And good evening to you. We realize we're outnumbered by staff today, more staff than councilmembers tonight, lots of reports.
Good evening. Tonight, we are asking council to adopt a resolution to approve the annual Downtown Holland Principal Shopping District Assessment Roll. That assessment is levied against properties within the PSD boundaries, which you can see on your screen. Within that core district, it amounts to 22 cents a square foot for ground floor, 14 cents a square foot for upper floors, and 14 cents a square foot for lower-level retailer/restaurant spaces. So, we're not seeking any increase in the assessment this year. I think this has been our rate for probably the last couple of years, we did a slight decrease during COVID. The PSD role supports events, activities, and promotions in downtown Holland. This year, we're also launching a new logo and branding and website project, which we're really excited about.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Hookstra.
Can I ask one? First of all, it amazes me that merchants in the downtown area carry these extra burdens with snowmelt and this assessment and are still doing business there. And I'm assuming that, I mean, we haven't had, I don't read anything in the report, they're still okay with this, I mean, I'm sure they would rather not have it, but you haven't heard any huge uprisings in opposition to this, am I right?
No, we've had no communication from any of our businesses or, you know, feedback from our board that they wouldn't support the PSD continuing to operate.
Well, good to know, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, what is the pleasure of council in regard to item 8C?
Moved to approve the Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Do we need a public hearing?
Oh, we do need a public hearing, thank you, appreciate that. We do need the public hearing on this before we do the motion on it, so I'm going to now open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? So, I'm going to now open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move to approve the downtown principal shopping district assessment.
Great. Moved by Freeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, now would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to speak to us directly at our meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send comments that will be received by all of council members, all council members. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We take those in in between our regular meetings, and then we accept them into the record at those regular meetings. We don't read them out loud, but we accept them as part of the record. We do have one in regard to a proposed traffic change. And I believe this is an item that we, counsel has already addressed earlier this month. So, we were proactive on this. Before we even got the notice on it, we'd already acted on this. But I would entertain a motion from counsel to accept this email into the record.
Move that we accept the public comment that was sent in.
All right. Moved by Aaron Sors. Is there support? Support by Freeman. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item twelve, E, four point one, city and Holland Board of Public Works insurance program. Chief?
This is pretty easy. I just turned it over. This will be turned over to our Finance Director, Lynn McCammon. Just got to remember everybody's names, and that's all I got to do.
That's great.
And the mic.
And the mic. Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Box and members of City Council. Tonight, I'm going to present the insurance program for fiscal year 2024. As many know, the City and Holland Board of Public Works, we work together and have a combined insurance program for property liability, auto, workers' compensation, and cyber. We work with Marsh, who was selected in 2022 for a three-year contract after completing a request for proposal for Insurance Agent of Record Services. This is the second year we are working with them. So, historically, the city has had the insurance program cover the period July first to June thirtieth. But we found that July first was a renewal date for so many entities that it was always difficult getting quotes for the program, and we felt like if we would move that date, we would have a better time obtaining quotes and hopefully a little bit more competition with the bids. So, you might recall in June this year, we presented that, and counsel, you agreed that we could do that, and we adopted at that time a short period from just July first to October thirty-first. So, tonight, we're coming back with a full-year proposal for the period November first, 2023 through October thirty-first, 2024. So, unfortunately, we're not able to have somebody from Marsh attend the meeting this evening, but she did include some comments about the insurance market and the renewal process, and it was included in the packet. So, I will be presenting for that program, and I will hopefully be able to answer any questions you might have. So, what we found is that the program we presented this evening generally keeps coverage at the same levels as in the prior year. However, the insurance market continues to be challenging this year, especially in the property and the liability. It's not too hard to turn on the news and see some major catastrophe that insurance would be covering. And even though we are in the climate haven that we are, we still sometimes get that reflected in our rates. So, the total premium for the package comes out to one million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. This does actually represent an increase of almost twenty percent or three hundred and twenty-nine thousand from the prior year. And I'll kind of highlight what the main drivers of the increases are. The first is the liability, like I mentioned. The liability increased one hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, and that really is because of the, what we see, just the insurance industry-wide losses and the continued impact of inflation. The property values at the city actually were the main driver of the increase for our property coverage. And our property coverage increase amounted to about one hundred and twenty-two thousand. And that really is mostly reflective of a new appraisal that we had done. We had not had an appraisal of the city property for, since twenty-twelve. And so, as you can imagine, we've added buildings. We've had a lot of inflation during that time. And so, we actually were advised from Marsh to get a new appraisal, and we conducted that earlier this spring, and our values actually increased by almost fifty percent. So, that is the main driver of the property. So, while it does seem like that is an unfortunate thing to do, it actually was viewed very favorably from the market, and so we did get some reflection of that. The rate per dollar value only increased two percent. So, that was a good thing. So, it's good and not so good. But at least we'll be covered for what we really need to be covered. So, we did get some good news this year in the cyber market, which you know from the last few years, we've had a lot of stress with that. Some municipalities and entities aren't even able to obtain insurance. So, the market has stabilized a bit. So, this year, we received a few quotes, and we are actually happy to report that we, both the city and BPW, we have separate policies for the cyber coverage, and both of us received a decrease in those premiums. And they had mentioned that that was reflective not only of the stabilized market, but also we go through a very thorough process of competing applications. They interview our IT, and they felt like the different controls that we've added at the city and Board of Public Works have really impacted the renewals that we've gotten. So, that was a positive. And then you might see one other item on the chart that is new. It's called inland marine. And what this is, is we used to have just property, and when we went through the whole appraisal process, we noticed, well, we have this coverage and had all these, like, mobile equipment and so forth listed, but they were under what was the deductible. So, we would have never actually had insurance on them. So, we were advised to consider getting a separate policy, which we did. We only have a ten thousand deductible for those items, and at a cost of seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, really does make sense to have that change. So, in the workers' comp and the auto insurance, the renewals did show an increase, but again, the rates really stayed pretty consistent. Those only reflect the changes in the valuation. As you can imagine, the auto values increased, and then workers' compensation kind of raises with the cost of employment. So, finally, the, just a reminder that the BPW energy generation assets, that includes Holland Energy Park, that is not included in here. They do that separately on themselves, just given the nature of that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the insurance renewal for this evening.
Mr. Hookstra.
Could you briefly explain what the inland marine covers, what that category covers?
So, it's like the little, more of the equipment that we have that might be under, you know, like some of the plows and some of the equipment, maybe the sidewalk clearers. And that's not really a technical term, I know, but Brian probably knows better. But we have a whole list. We work with the transportation group to get all the equipment. It's kind of like the, it's not the big fire trucks or the autos. It's anything that might be attached. We even have some plows that I think are attached to the trucks, but we separately cover those because they could be covered, we would have to incur different costs for the plow. That's a tough one.
Yeah, the term marine seems like a bit of a misnomer.
I know, right? I kind of thought at first, too. I was like, what is that? But yeah, no. It's equipment.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? And I just have a comment. We don't have anybody here from the IT department tonight, but kudos to our IT department for giving us the reduction in the cybersecurity. And I know I've been getting emails the last couple of weeks or so that this is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and IT's been doing a great job of informing us and training us and making sure that we're doing a great job in that area. So, I love it anytime our great staff does something that helps us save money.
Yeah, we're lucky to have them work in-house with us.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments for staff? Great. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item twelve, E, four point one?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support? Support by Freeman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item is the item that was removed from the consent agenda, item twelve, E, four point four. Accept the Justice Assistance Grant funding. Chief?
I think our grant specialist, Connie Locker, is here to talk about that?
All right. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Organized my paperwork here. So, the Justice Assistance Grant is a federal allocation from the Justice Department that's awarded to various cities annually. The City of Holland is fortunate to receive this annually, and last year, we got about eleven thousand two hundred. So, this year, it's eleven thousand five hundred and nineteen, which is a slight increase, which is always good. The Public Safety Department chooses what to do with those funds, and that is then approved by the Justice Department, and then we take it before counsel. So, this year, they've chosen to really stretch their dollar quite a ways. So, I'll just kind of outline what the plans are this year. For three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, they're planning to purchase protective gear and sturdy uniforms for the mobile field force team. So, twelve upper body and shoulder protectors, things that are worn over body armor just for additional protection, plus twelve pairs of uniform pants and uniform shirts. They're also planning on purchasing dictation software and microphones, which will really make timely reporting and more efficient reporting possible. Currently, the way that they explained the reporting piece is that a lot of officers choose to dictate their reports, and then that is then typed up by front office staff, which can lead to some time crunches and things like that and potential, you know, errors in just, you know, what word was that that was said, you know? So, the Public Safety Department has recently been testing this software called Dragon Law Enforcement Police Reporting Software. It offers live speech to text transcription, and the officer can check as they're saying it if this is correct or not. So, it saves time. It makes things more accurate. And so, for four thousand nine hundred and five dollars, they're planning on six one-year subscriptions to that software, six microphones, and three training sessions. And the microphones are super cool. They allow you to kind of flip through and go through forms automatically. So, if you're an officer in the field, you can just do that from your microphone without having to really get involved in a computer or things like that. And then finally, they're planning on repurposing their old mobile command vehicle, which was recently decommissioned into a victim services unit for a mobile response vehicle for that unit. VSU advocates currently, they'll sit with people that have been affected by an incident, and frequently, they'll sit outside near the site of an incident, weather or not dependent. So, in the snow, in the rain, near the site of an incident, that could be very traumatic for the person that was affected. So, this choice to repurpose the old command vehicle into a response vehicle for those VSU advocates, excuse me, will really offer a more comfortable space, a more welcoming space for people that have experienced an incident. They can get out of the rain or the weather and have a private space to sit and meet with the advocate. So, the current tables and workstations in the vehicle will be removed, and appropriate comfortable furniture, cabinets, other amenities that are appropriate will be added for three thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Great. Thank you. Questions from, for staff? Lynn?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you to Chief and your team for coming up with ways to better meet the needs of the community and your team and do that efficiently. I really appreciate that. And this is just a great opportunity to thank you again, Connie, for all the work that you do, because grants are key to the work that we, that you're, that the staff is doing. And I just really appreciate, allows us to be more cost-effective in the work that's happening in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Freeman.
Just kudos on the whole, the victims advocate piece of the repurposing of that vehicle. I go on many of those in my service to the community, and that's just going to be a huge increase. So, thanks for making that happen as well.
Any other comments or questions for staff? I just have one additional one. I was out of the country last week, but read in the paper that City received an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. You were the person who wrote that grant. I wanted to say kudos on that great work. I think it's, you have proven that you are well worth every penny that we pay you. So, thank you for doing that. For those that don't know, that's eight-hundred-thousand dollars toward the new ice skating park. So, congratulations on that. Well, well done.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. And I'll be, I'll be back to have that approved as well if we get the agreement. So.
Absolutely. Great. I can't, I can't wait. That's, that's going to be great. Thank you. What is the, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item twelve, E, four point four, the acceptance of the grant?
Move to accept the amazing Justice Assistance Grant.
Moved by Aaron Sors. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item, item twelve, E, six point two, Human Resources Wage and Classification Study Bid Award. Chief?
There she is. Jen Orm hiding around the corner there. Jen Orm, our Human Resources Director is here to talk a little bit about this and I think another item on the agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, you get to hear from me twice tonight.
All right.
All right. Well, you might recall, just a few years ago, 2019 and 2020, we conducted our last wage and classification study, and it was very successful. We gained a lot of valuable information and recommendations from that firm. And the best practice is really to do this every two to five years. So, here I am again. So, we've, I just want to explain the process. So, in August, we drafted a RFP, sent that out to seven different firms nationwide, some here in Michigan, some in other states. Three of those firms did send us a sealed bid, and so those were reviewed by myself, the HR specialist as well, and then we scheduled some interviews. So, we met with all three of the firms virtually, and that was a great experience. We gained a lot of information, asked all of our questions, and it's nice, since we've already been through this just a few years ago, we could easily ask questions of things that maybe were a little bumpy in the last process or that we thought could be more robust, and we gained a lot of valuable information from the three firms. So, at that point, I met with Keith and discussed my recommendation for which firm to go with. And if you look in the packet, I've attached the RFP. I've also attached all three of the bids, because we also received those electronically. And yeah, so, the recommendation is to go with Pontefex. I believe that's how you pronounce the firm. And they are based out of Minnesota, but they will be coming to Michigan to meet with our leadership team, some of our deputy directors, and then also some key staff. And so, at this point, I'm asking for, and this was budgeted, so there's no budget amendment. That's the other good news. But we're really excited about this. This firm works with all kinds of municipalities around the country, but they've worked with a lot in Michigan. So, that was one thing that really stood out to us. Some of our neighbors have used them. City of Walker, Allendale, Central Dispatch even use them. So, we really feel pretty confident that this is a good fit for the City of Holland.
All right. Questions for staff?
Jen, how did you choose the seven firms that received the RFP?
That's a great question. So, I am part of a HR cohort with HR directors all over West Michigan, and so we constantly pick each other's brains. We get together every other month, but then we always have emails and surveys going, and it's just like our own little listserv. So, I sent out a survey, or Marty did, my executive assistant, sent out a survey, and we received several recommendations. And so, we used that information, and then I also used the previous companies that we had sent out in 2019. So, I sent them another request for proposal and then just doing some online research, you know, looking up different firms, because there are a lot of HR consulting firms out there since 2019 that are in the area in other states. So, that's really how we came up with it. And then we also sent it to MML. They do this type of work, too, but unfortunately, I got the same denial as last time. They're just too busy to take on our project.
Did, so the firm that did it the last time, did they apply?
They did, yes.
And they did not?
They did not. Well, they're not who I'm recommending. Yes. They did a great job last time. They really did. But their focus is really more on the private sector than the public sector. And so, the data sources that they were using, we were kind of having to steer them towards some more municipal information, whereas the gentleman gentleman, the president of the company, Pontefex, this is, this is their bread and butter, this is what they do. Yeah, yeah, you bet.
Any other questions? Mr. Freeman?
Um, as I read it, is there's, um, an eight-week time period, when do you anticipate that starting and then would it have implications then to your spring reports for recommendations for staff adjustments?
Yeah, great question. Um, so, another thing that was really appealing about this firm is they promised, um, twelve weeks versus some of the others, six months, fifteen weeks. And so, um, we're excited to start, so I was really excited to present to you tonight and get this ball, keep it moving because I'm anxious. Um, it's just a competitive labor market right now. We want to make sure that we're paying our employees what we should be. Um, we do surveys with those other municipalities, so I know, you know, key positions that we're trying to recruit. We always ask, what are you paying your mechanics? What are you paying your engineers? Um, but there are a lot of positions that, um, have changed over the years. So, yeah, they definitely will do a thorough job at looking at all of our job descriptions and making sure that we're in line with where we should be. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to, uh, the wage and, human resources wage and classification study bid award?
Move to approve the human resources wage and classification study.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item twelve E six point three, human resources, approve new applicant tracking onboarding performance management system with NeoGov. Good evening again.
I'm back, yes. All right. Well, um, this is kind of bad news and good news. So, we were notified by Civic HR, that's our current system that we use, that they are going to no longer provide this service. Um, I believe that they were bought out, so they're still doing a lot of the other, like, the website and that type of thing, but they're not doing applicant tracking or onboarding anymore. So, they gave us that notification. They've actually even stopped, um, like, if you have tech support issues, we're kind of on our own right now, so we have to make a change. We don't really have an option and we're not going back to paper and people dropping off their resumes. So, um, yes, because they'll be ending in February, we'd like to get something implemented, um, as soon as January, just so that we have a smooth transition. We also have to collect a lot of information from our current system because by law you have to keep those applications and resumes on file. So, we're gonna be very busy in the next few months, um, but we did meet with, um, four different companies that provide the online applicant tracking and onboarding services, um, and they also offered more services. The one that we have right now is pretty basic. I mean, it does the trick, but you kind of get what you pay for and it's pretty, it's pretty simple. So, um, in June, we met, we've actually formed a committee. So, it was myself and Veronica, the HR specialist, but then we also, um, brought in IT, so our IT manager, Joe, was involved in that committee and then Garrett from Parks and Rec, who I like to call a super user because he hires pretty much more than any other person because we have so many seasonal positions as part of the rec program. So, I wanted somebody on the committee that would look at it from the hiring managers', um, aspect and then also from technology. So, we formed the committee and we did meet with four different, um, applicant tracking system vendors and had lots of discussions and then also, I was tapping into my HR director group and asking, who do you use? What do you think? You know, just kind of picking their brains. And, um, so we narrowed it down to two, NeoGov being one of the top two. And so, then what we did was we, um, formed a larger committee of stakeholders and these are folks that, because it's not just when the candidate applies, it's also once they're hired, all of their informations in the system and then all of our onboarding is electronic. So, to get them in the door, so they're not having to fill out paperwork their entire first day, this way they can do it all online. Um, so, we brought in people like, um, the person that processes payroll for Windmill Island and transportation, Parks and Rec, and I think we had about fifteen, maybe seventeen people in the room and we actually did a demo of each of the systems for them and then talked about, you know, other options that are, you know, available through these systems because they are much more robust. So, that's where the performance management piece comes in. Right now, all of our employees do receive an annual performance evaluation. Um, we're pretty consistent for all of our non-union, non-public safety positions. They have their own very consistent and steady system, um, in their department, but we're just doing it with a PDF and then people are sitting down and signing the paper. And I've used electronic performance management systems in the past and they are so, so much better because you can assign a weight to a goal, so if something carries a lot more weight in a position, if they receive a higher rank on that, it will affect their score. It's just much more robust. So, we decided with going with NeoGov, hopefully, if you accept the recommendation, that we would also have the electronic performance evaluation, um, as part of that system. So, we are recommending NeoGov at this point and another thing that's great about NeoGov and you can kind of tell from the name, they're only focused on municipalities. So, of the four different vendors we met with, a lot of them were kind of scratching their heads when we were asking them a lot of really detailed questions, um, about how their system would handle this or that and they're thinking, why, why would this be an issue? But it's government-specific, so needing fund information and whatnot. So, NeoGov, they actually, um, I think they're probably the most popular. When I looked at other municipalities in the area, most of them were using NeoGov and had wonderful things to say. So, they've been great to work with, um, we're excited about this. I think it's really gonna make us more efficient as a city, our hiring managers, our staff, and it's just gonna be a better overall experience as we're bringing candidates into the city, keep us competitive. So, yeah, that's the recommendation, NeoGov.
All right. Questions for staff? I, I just have one. Is, is there a system or a way that they have that's gonna assist you in transitioning from the old system to the new system?
No, but I might come back and ask for an intern because it's gonna be a lot of very tedious work, yes.
That's a lot of data.
I know, it really is, it is. But, we're, we're accepting the challenge and we're excited for it.
All right, yeah, well, you don't, you don't really have much of a choice, do you?
That's true, we don't.
All right. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Uh, do they offer, um, training for your staff as well, that they're doing it instead of you doing it?
Yes. So, NeoGov, um, does most of their training virtually, but it will be great because then people can, um, you know, sign up for various sessions and then we can actually have a couple of the training sessions in the training room and I'll just put the trainer up on the big screen. Um, but we will have some folks that are going to use it, uh, more in-depth and so I believe those folks will probably, um, have a specific, like, the hiring managers that hire all the time and that use the system for multiple postings will probably receive more training. Yeah. Yes, thanks.
Great. Any other questions for staff?
I was gonna ask that.
Okay.
And Mayor, this does require, um, a budget adjustment as well.
Uh, okay, great. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Um, all right, what is, uh, Lynn?
Is there a reporting feature in this?
Oh, yeah. So much better than what we have now. In fact, we can use, um, I'm glad you asked that because I left that out. The reporting is incredible and it even gives us like EEO data, so it's gonna make a few of our processes more efficient because everybody that comes through that system, it collects all of that data and it just gives you a, a great dashboard, so it's gonna be easy to look at, easy to get the information, easy to share the information with you all, with Keith, with hiring managers. It's just, the reporting was really impressive.
So, you'll be able to tell who's getting hired, who isn't getting hired?
Yep. Where did they hear about our job, those types of things, yeah. It's great.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item twelve E six point three?
Move to approve the new applicant tracking onboarding performance management system.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors, any discussion?
Yeah, could you just cover the budget adjustment? Did you, yeah, sorry, I thought you were gonna say that before.
So, first of all, it's not my budget. It's, it's IT's, which is kind of nice. Um, so, yeah, I've been working with Lynn quite closely. Um, it is a three-year contract, so you'll see that in the attachments. Um, so, I don't, unless, Chief Messer, can you pull up? Let me see if I have it. Actually, okay.
You're talking about the cost of the three-year contract?
Yes, so the cost-
Seventy-nine thousand five twenty-six ninety-seven?
Yes.
That's the cost of the three-year contract.
Correct. And the budget adjustment for this fiscal year would be twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-two. Yes. Yes, this year, mm-hmm. Because what we had budgeted before, again, you get what you pay for, was pretty minimal. Nobody could compete with that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Yes, Ron?
Mr. Mayor, one just one comment. The motion addressed, uh, approving the, the, the bid, the proposal, but I didn't hear the, uh, motion address the, the budget amendment.
Ah.
And so, either do those separately or combine it into one.
All right. Would you be interested in making an amendment to your motion?
Well, certainly. If it's recommended to do it all at once, then to include the budget adjustment with that motion.
All right, and that, that, so that's been amended. Uh, who seconded that? Nikki, would you be willing to second that amended motion?
Absolutely.
All right, so we have an amended motion that's seconded on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, communications from the city manager. Uh, city manager and assistant city manager are away this evening, so we've, uh, we've reached down to the bench to, uh-
Yes.
Public, public safety chief Messer. Good evening.
Good evening. You, you apparently found me at the very end of the bench, is that where you found me?
We, we've still got some people below, behind you on the bench. We won't say below, but we've got a very, very deep and capable bench here at the city.
We definitely do, no question. So, yeah, I just wanted to take just a, a couple minutes to, uh, take this opportunity to publicly thank you, Mayor, and the rest of council for all of your support for the Department of Public Safety and I think all the other department directors are here and, and, some of them are not here, but I think they'd echo that, just that, uh, your support has come in so many different ways, whether it be staffing, training, capital, a- and I can list, I, I could, which I won't, but I could speak for a long time about all of the support, everything that you've approved for all of our departments, but especially the Department of Public Safety with all the, you know, with all the new fire stations and, and on and on and on. So, I just wanted to publicly say, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council for support. But I also want to say, uh, to the outgoing members of council, who Jay, I, I hope is, wherever the cameras are at, I hope you're watching at home, and Dave and Nikki, uh, I just want to say, thank you for all of your time. And I actually, uh, created a little bit of a list and I'm probably missing a few things of all the things that, uh, that involves being a council member that you've had to be involved in. I know Dave and Jay have been here for a long time, Nikki as well. I just want to read a few of these things off, that you're, that all of you are responsible for, uh, as being a council member. Attending regular meetings, study sessions, committee meetings that most people don't realize that you're on other nights of the week, tulip time parades where you have to, you know, wear your, your, your uniform and your, your Dutch costume, so, uh, national night out events, community meetings, phone calls, emails, text messages, all, all through the, the day and night. Uh, I know I've been involved with a few of those. Uh, facility tours, employee luncheons, holiday luncheons, council retreat or advances, depending on which number of council you are.
Mr. Trethuys is not here, so you can say retreat.
Council retreats, uh, budget meetings and hearings, retirement parties, and I'm sure many, many other special events and dinners. So, I think most people in the community don't understand and don't recognize how much time and effort is put into this. So, I just wanted to bring that forward and I'm sure you can name about ten other things that you're involved in. Uh, I just want to recognize that tonight, especially, uh, Dave, Jay and Nikki and, and wish you the very, very best, uh, as you step away from this group and our team. So, we really appreciate all of your service and, uh, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Chief. You, you and the other department heads and your teams make us look good, so we, and we appreciate that. Thank you for that. Uh, next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. Uh, I do have two proclamations this evening. Uh, the first is in regard to the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Vennralti farmhouse. Whereas, the Vennralti farmhouse, Holland, Michigan, is celebrating its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary and whereas in eighteen forty-seven, Holland's founder, Albertus Christian Vennralti, acquired the one hundred and sixty-acre land for two dollars and thirty-two cents an acre. His son, Benjamin Vennralti, became a prominent farmer and received the land from his father. He built the farmhouse in eighteen seventy-two on the hill which overlooks most of the land. And whereas, the Vennralti farmhouse serves as an excellent example of an Italianate residential architecture with classical revival-style influences common in the late nineteenth century. The farmhouse is one of the few buildings that survived the eighteen seventy-one fires that destroyed much of Holland, making it the best surviving structure that represents, that presents a direct association with the pioneer Vennralti family. And whereas, in eighteen, in nineteen eighty-three, Benjamin's great-grandchildren sold the farm to the city of Holland, which preserved it as a nature and recreation area that contains the farmhouse and outbuildings set on a hilltop overlooking pastures and woodlands and which includes nature trails, picnic shelters, play structures, a dog park and cross-country skiing in the winter and of course sledding as well. Uh, and whereas, the Vennralti farmhouse holds historical significance as one of the last structures in Holland, directly associated with the Vennralti family. And whereas, it is an honor to pay tribute on the occasion of its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, recognizing its rich history and enduring contributions. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the city of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, call on residents to express gratitude and appreciation to the Vennralti family for their faithfulness, vision and diligence in building the Vennralti farmhouse and encourage all people of Holland, Michigan to recognize and celebrate the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Vennralti farmhouse on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland, this eighteenth of October, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Nathan Box. And there will be a celebration at Vennralti Farm on the twenty-eighth as well and we invite people to come and join and, join us in celebrating the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Uh, my second proclamation is in regard to Extra Mile Day. Uh, whereas Holland, Michigan is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas, Holland, Michigan is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with the total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas, Holland, Michigan is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas, Holland, Michigan acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty extra mile cities, cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November one, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the city of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim November one, twenty twenty-three, Extra Mile Day. I encourage, I urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country or world a better place. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland, this eighteenth day of October, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Nathan Box. Um, and I just have, uh, a couple of comments I mentioned earlier in the meeting. Uh, I was out of the country last week. Uh, council member Dave Hookstra and international relations commissioner, uh, Michael Start and I traveled to the Netherlands for a week to meet with representatives of, uh, the city of Holland and the province of Drenthe, uh, with the ultimate goal of creating a cultural exchange relationship. Uh, this was the first step. We got to meet with, uh, the mayor Marco Outt. Uh, we also met with a number of the aldermen. We met with, uh, city commissioners. Uh, we had an incredible host and an incredible few days, uh, there. We were there from Sunday until Wednesday morning, uh, getting a, an opportunity to tour the city of Ha- the city of Assen, the government offices, their incredible museum which has a phenomenal Van Gogh exhibit. Uh, I did not realize before we, uh, planned the trip that Van Gogh spent his early days in the province of Drenthe and painted a whole lot of paintings. And one of the things that I love about, uh, small-town museums in, in Europe is that you are able to put your nose right up to a Van Gogh and nobody stops you. Um, so we got the opportunity to see a lot of the Van Gogh paintings up close and personal. We did not touch any of them, but we were able to look at them very closely. Uh, it was a, it was a great, uh, great opportunity, great, uh, first start and first step. We are hoping that we are able to encourage, uh, the, some representatives of Assen- hoping that we are able to encourage the, some representatives of Haasen to come here next fall for the international festival and for the rededication of the immigrant statue that is in Collin Park. The artist who made and designed the immigrant statue is from Haasen, and the duplicate of that statue is in Haasen in what's called a holiday park, that can probably best be described as a combination of amusement park, campground, water park, all kinds of great, lots of German tourists there on holiday, we actually went and visited the statue in Haasen and found out it is for sale. So, if we're interested in having a second one here in Holland, we could purchase the one in Haasen, Netherlands, although I think that might be a little bit superfluous for us to do that. Dave, Dave and Michael headed back to Holland on Wednesday, and just by coincidence, a team from Tulip Time was in the Netherlands that same week, so my wife and I joined with the Tulip Time group and Miranda from WoodTV8, and had the opportunity to be in The Hague and in Amsterdam, and as part of that trip and our connection that we had there, my wife and I got to have a meeting with the Prime Minister of the Netherlands, wonderful gentleman, Mark Rutte, who spent an incredible one hour with us in his private office. He kept shooing away his staffers who were trying to get the meeting to stop, we were able to present him and the counselor to the queen, or to the king, excuse me, to the king, two pairs of gold-plated wooden shoes, they were small children-sized shoes, that a very talented local resident was able to make, they were custom-made, they're the only pair, the only two pair that exist in the entire world, and people wondered about the cost, there's about $8 worth of gold on those shoes, it's just a micro-thin coating of gold, but the Prime Minister was overjoyed, he said in his 13 years as Prime Minister, he's received a lot of gifts and he's never received a pair of gold and wooden shoes, so he was very excited about that. In addition to meeting the Prime Minister and the mayor of Haasen, we also had the opportunity to have a meeting with the mayor of The Hague, and then while we were there, we were able to organize a meeting with the new US Ambassador to the Netherlands, Shefali Rosden-Duggel, and I think I may have convinced her to come for Tulip Time this year, we're still trying to work out some details there, but she was wonderfully welcoming as well, as I kept saying throughout the trip, we are linked to our past in the Netherlands, but we are also looking to our future. The Netherlands is a very, very modern, very diverse country, they were a little taken back, especially in Haasen, that we still wear wooden shoes and 18th-century period Dutch costumes here, I'm not sure anybody we met in Haasen had or wore a pair of wooden shoes, other than some older farmers that were there, but it was an overwhelmingly successful, rewarding trip, the Dutch people are incredibly generous, incredibly welcoming, incredibly friendly, but they like to eat a lot of deep-fried meat pastes, which were just not completely to my liking, but otherwise, a phenomenal trip, and I'll give Dave the opportunity to fill in some additional things as well if he wants to during city member, city council member comments, but those are my comments for this evening. Members of city council, anyone have anything to share? Mr. Hookstra?
Well, since you mentioned it, I'm not going to attempt to add much to that, because that was a pretty good encapsulation of our trip, other than to say, if you're Dutch, you pronounce the gentleman's name Van Gogh.
Van Gogh.
Yeah, not Van Gogh, it's Van Gogh, you gotta get that thing going on there. But, yeah, it was kind of like a mini Dutch invasion of the Netherlands, but we accomplished the goals that we had before us, and looking for a lot of, reaping a lot of rewards from that. The only other thing, I want to just respond to Matt a bit, thank you for reading that and for expressing the things you did, after you read that list, it's like, no wonder I feel tired, you know? But, and I appreciate the sentiment, it's easier for us as a group to do the things that we do to support the staff here, Lynn said it very well one time, that we serve three constituencies, one is obviously the people that elect us, one is this group, but the other is the staff and the organization that's the city. And over the years, I've, I've sort of, it's been central to me, that last constituency, our, the employees, and I hate to use the term employees, because they're really partners in what we do, but I've never seen a more dedicated group of people who are invested in what they do, who love the city, and it's remarkable, really, and we were, and not always in the best of circumstances, we were talking a bit before the meeting about some kind of unusual things that our public safety department is dealing with these days, very unique to the time, I think. It's a, it's a tough job, but we have folks who are dedicated to doing it and doing it well, regardless of what discipline, whether it's public safety, or parks, or finance, or anything, I've yet to see someone who didn't approach their job with huge dedication and a desire to do the best they can, so, from my perspective, I'll give you whatever you want. Of course, I'm out of here in a couple of weeks, but it's been a pleasure to, to support our staff and you, so, but thank you for saying that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other motions, communications from council? Seeing none, there's just one more motion I'd entertain at this moment.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman, support by Byrd, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all, have a good-